So I will go ahead and call a meeting to order and I'll offer prayer and then we'll stand for our pledge. Lord, we've come to you this morning grateful for the relief from the dry weather and just thankful for the rains that we've received. And as I looked up in the sky this morning, it was just a beautiful sunrise and just the reflection of the sun coming off of the clouds and the different hues, the grades and the reds, Lord, it was just a beautiful morning. As I think about that and reflect upon what we have for us today, Lord, I just ask that you be with us as I always do and guide us and lead us through our discussions and conversations today. And Lord, may those be worthy of praise to you and to honor your holy name. And Lord, as I think about the times we live in and reflect on that, Lord, I just ask that you put your hand upon our nation, put your hand upon our leaders at the federal level, at the state level, and here locally, giving us the wisdom that we need to conduct the business in a very transparent way and using the resources that we've been given as efficiently as possible, Lord. And again, may all that be honor and glory to your name. And Lord, what we need now more than anything is just love for a fellow man and compassion. And, Lord, we grieve those who've lost their lives recently. And, Lord, just lift them and their families up to you. We just thank you and we love you in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On our agenda this morning, I need to just make a note and amendment. I have with us this morning Representative Don Mayhew. And he will be joining the sheriff, the sheriff will be joining him. And we'll be taking up a discussion regarding jail per diem. And I seen Don last week, I believe, or two weeks ago, and he mentioned he was trying to work his schedule to come down and see us. And I said, "You're welcome anytime." And, but I didn't get him on the schedule because sometimes the representative's schedules change. But Don's here, the sheriff will be here in a little bit. And after we get through our topics this morning, then we will go into that discussion. So with that, there's no minutes to prove this morning. So we'll get right into what looks like a very light agenda. I see no CDT applications on my left. I see no SB forty applications on my left. And we're in general county business. And if the sheriff were here, we'd go ahead and take up that, but we'll take up general county business until the sheriff gets here. And then we'll allow the sheriff and the representative to open the discussion on jail per diem. So do we have anything this morning that you'd like to discuss?
Only thing that I've got that I just got from our road foreman and stuff, Jared, that Cat is bringing down a demo skid loader tomorrow or today, they're dropping off today, and Ryan will be back tomorrow to go over everything with the guys, the select guys that Jared has selected to be, and to be able to operate one if we so choose to. Get his skids through later.
Good.
Yep. I mentioned it with him and stuff, and he said it's a seventy horsepower machine, and he's done a little background on it. He says it's what a couple of other counties and stuff are running that surround us. So he seems to think it'll be efficient enough to handle what needs that we're thinking we might have. I don't have no times as far as when Ryan will be here tomorrow with it. Maybe he'll drop it off this afternoon sometime.
And is Ryan coming back to demo it?
Ryan will be here tomorrow. He's gonna have somebody else drop it off this afternoon.
Drop it off, right.
Yeah, drop it off this afternoon. Ryan will be here himself tomorrow. But we don't know what that time is until later today.
Right. Okay, so we, before we adjourned last week, we had went down to the warehouse. And we have been able to shrink the size of the space that we needed in order to continue to keep our equipment that we need ready to go. Should save the county a few thousand dollars a year. The health department did remove their trailer out of there. So we will research what they have prepaid. And if they've prepaid the full year, then we'll give them a prorated refund on what they contribute to the warehouse. Joe, thank you for getting all that done. Eric, thank you for your part in that as well. And I stopped by there the other day and I visited one of the coworkers. And I think in hindsight, they kind of would now agree that our space is sufficient and better organized and
Definitely organized, yeah.
Redo a lot of clutter, if you will. So I think it was a good decision and we finally got that done. So thank you, gentlemen, for that. The only other thing I would have in general county business at this point would be, we had had a discussion a few weeks ago, and I think Eric, you maybe brought this up. We were trying to clean up around the maintenance building over there. And we had some tires and things like that that maybe you had planned for. And this came up yesterday. What would we value any of those tires at if there was any value at all? I understand that there was, our road and bridge foreman wanted to get some of those cleared out of there and might even be willing to make a purchase on any of those tires that might have any value to him or to anyone else. And we'd open it up to everyone, but like we've put a value on those used grader blades before where it was either take them to a recycler and sell them for scrap metal prices or we've offered them, I believe, for ten dollars apiece to individuals for whatever they want to use them for. And that's kind of been a standing amount that we have placed on those. So at this point, is there any discussion that we want to take on either removing the tires that are just totally worthless to anybody and everybody? Or if we had any individual that wanted to purchase any of those tires, whether it's one or ten, then I'd like to open that discussion up so I can give road and bridge some direction as to cleanup, cleanup and maybe some value. So I'd like your thoughts on that.
Yeah, as part of my thoughts is up on that, yeah, definitely needs to be cleaned up around there. We need to kind of tidy up a little bit for sure. I agree with that. Any of those tires and stuff that still got good sidewalls and beads and stuff, I believe those should be able to be recapped. And I know we've kind of kept those off to the side because we had somebody else I thought was coming in and giving us the determination on what is worthy, what isn't worthy. Is that correct? I think Prons was part of that process, yeah. But as far as the rest of those, I believe there had been a few of those old tires that wasn't worthy of recapping or treading, that had some bad sidewalls or other things with them. And I think we already sold some out for like five bucks or something, or I don't remember. I know there've been a few tires disappeared.
So at every turn, it sounds like we have to pay one way or another to get rid of worthless tires. So even if we gave them away and saving this money by not having to pay to give them away.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is at this point, we have the ability to segregate some that might have value for being able to be recapped. Are those, do we have any of it right now that is in that stack, if you will?
I could all answer that right up my term.
And I don't know that either. I know that they came and picked up some a while back. But I don't know what's out there now and what's not. I'm not a tire man.
So the direction then that I would give the road and bridge foreman would be to identify and segregate any tires that could be recapped and the other ones can be?
Give them away?
Give them away.
Save it as a disposal fee. Because we're gonna have to do something with them.
And we'll limit that to tires?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right, I will give you that direction. Anything else? Sheriff wasn't gonna be here, is that correct?
So he had a meeting that he had to have some issues in the department he needed to take care of. He wasn't sure exactly how long that was gonna take. He said he would try to get here as quick as he could. I can get started at any time you feel the need.
Okay, I feel the need.
All right.
So I'm State Representative Don Mayhew with the one hundred and twenty-fourth district. I'm also chairman of the Corrections and Public Institutions Committee at the Capitol. And it has been, well, since my very first year in Capitol, the first budget I voted on, as a matter of fact, jail per diem has been the topic. And at that point, we were about forty-two million dollars in arrears to our counties, to which surprised me. You know, I figured we paid our bills. And as it turns out, there was at least one of them that we weren't. And so I had made the statement that, you know, we need to figure out a way to get our counties caught up. Because being very familiar with county government and trying to squeeze blood out of every turnip we can find, that that forty-two million dollars is a big number. And I don't care what part of that was Plaski Counties or Lake Bleed Counties. It's, that is a huge number for those folks. As it turns out, Plaski County, where I'm from, was, the state was into them for about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars at the time. And knowing how close on the edge and the margins that our sheriff was trying to run the department, that's a huge number. So as with anything else, you gotta be careful what you say because you get voluntold to do something at that point. And so the speaker appointed three of us to be on a committee, to a subcommittee, to try to look at that issue. Well, there was a lot of data that we did not have. And so it was hard to analyze what the problem was without the data. So Trevor Foley, who is Director of the Department of Corrections, said that, yes, we can start collecting data to try to figure out in what categories where all this money was going to. And so he did that. Well, we've been kind of kicking that can down the road, but also sort of waiting on that data to be available so that we could try to make a decision with that. Well, it becomes extremely important at this point in the process. We started here about three and a half years ago with six and a half billion dollars in reserve. And we were using a lot of that reserve to plug some of the holes in the budget, like jail per diem. There were several other things. But in that last three and a half years, we've made some pretty poor paying decisions. And I freely admit that, that we could have done better with that reserve. Well, now that brings us to now. This next budget cycle, we'll probably make it through just fine. But the one after that is gonna be a problem. And it's already reared its ugly head with what the governor's been doing on withholds. A lot of that has to do with the way that we budget. And we start the year with what we call the consensus revenue estimate, or what we say called the CRE. And that's where the House and the Senate and the governor all get together and decide on how quickly the economy will grow over the next year for that budget cycle. And so that number has ranged anywhere from about one point two up to about one point nine percent since I've been in the House of Representatives for seven years. In that same period, we've seen, the first budget I voted on was twenty-nine and a half billion dollars to a budget last year of about fifty-three billion dollars. Well, that CRE is the number that we start with. And that's what we budget off of. Me personally, I thought one point eight three, I believe it was, for this budget cycle was a little bit aggressive. And as it turns out, perhaps by luck, but it turned out to be true. Because when we start doing withholds, that tells us that we don't have the revenue that we had projected. And that's exactly what's going on. So what was projected was we'd end up with one point five billion dollars on the bottom line. And what we saw at the end of the last cycle was that we ended up with about six hundred million on the bottom line. So about half, actually a little bit less than half. And that's the direct result of projecting that CRE too big. Well, in this next budget cycle, we've got the exact same problem. So now next year, we're probably gonna come back with a lot lower one for that budget cycle. Well, what's the problem that creates for it? Well, we started looking around for places we can cut. And obviously, there's a few categories that are just easy pay. And unfortunately, we've used jail per diem to make up that shortfall in the past. I don't want that to happen again. So my goal with the committee was to try to figure out where we're at and what we can do in order to help prevent that from happening in the future. What's driving these costs? Well, the numbers that we got from the Department of Corrections was it looks like about seventy-seven percent of all jail per diem is a direct result of pre-trial confinement. Well, we can speculate a lot on what's driving those numbers. I mean, we have a constitutional requirement for a speedy trial, so why are these people spending so much time in jail? There was eight hundred and fifty-one people who had spent more than a year in jail. And that was based on the payoff, right? Well, you don't get paid until that person moves through the system. So it was those eight hundred and sixty-one that spent more than a year in jail. But how many are still in our jails awaiting trial? So looking at, trying to dive down into those numbers, what's driving that? Well, there's certainly a few factors. But not the least of which is getting a mental health evaluation for some of these folks who have been declared either through court proceedings or other, that they're not capable to stand trial. A lot of them can be made capable of standing trial if they get treatment. So what we've ended up with is about, it looks to me like about four hundred to six hundred people at any one given time in our jails, in our county jails, awaiting either an evaluation or treatment so that they can stand trial or moved out of the system completely and will never be sane enough to stand trial and back into the state system. So I've heard anecdotally that there are people who are spending, who are still in jail and been there for three years. There's at least a subset of those folks that whatever crime they were accused of, their sentence would have been less than three years. So that's not sustainable, right? We have to figure out a way, if the state is the holdup, well, then the state needs to figure out a way to move those folks through the system. So we did at least one additional thing last year. We funded one of their mobile treatment vans that they drive around the state. They had one. And so now they've got two. And they assure me that that's gonna help them move toward trying to get caught up. Well, we don't have a whole lot of data right at this point to tell us whether or not that will happen. So we need to work on strategies that will help us get to the point where both, we're moving those folks through the system, getting them the mental health treatment that they need and/or getting them to trial or getting them into a facility where they can actually be held. Our jailers and our deputies are not equipped or trained to manage those folks. Have a hard enough time, I think we'd say, with the ones that we've got. But I do know of one jailer who told me that they had to take an entire segment of their jail for one person. They had to move the prisoners out of that area just so they could have a place to put this person because of the troubles that he caused with the general population. Well, that's a stress that none of us can absorb. We have, you know, we're not at capacity over in Plaski County, but I can name you several jails who are. And what do you do with those folks? And so one of the ideas that was pitched around after talking to the Department of Corrections and to the Department of Mental Health was to have a central facility to move these folks into so that when you end up with someone who's in need of mental health care or they need to be restored to take, getting their medications, et cetera, so they can stand trial, to move them out of your jail into a state facility. Okay, so then the problem becomes, well, where does that state facility? Well, as it turns out, we have one, a former prison, that right now we're using as a training facility. And so that is at least one possibility. You know, take some segment, some small part of that prison and use it as a temporary holding facility for our counties. Well, admittedly, that's up in Cameron Reserve, by the way, that's quite a little drive. So I need to find out from our commissioners and our sheriffs a few things. And so the list of questions that I've got there is kind of a way to try to capture both the sentiment for that kind of a thing and to try to collect some finer data in order to be able to accumulate how much it costs us to do one versus the other one. Where can we save money? Me personally, I don't think we're just, up at the state, we shouldn't be looking at just ways to save the state of Missouri money generally. But we should be trying to figure out how to save our county's money and our city's money on whatever that is. And for this particular item, it seems like, I won't call it a simple fix, but it seems to be an obvious fix of what we need to do. If it's a state department that's keeping us from doing our job down here at the county level, then I think we should try to attack that problem. And if there's a problem at that state department for why they can't do that, well, then we need to figure out what that problem is and try to work on that. In other words, follow the problem upstream. Instead of treating the symptom, let's treat what the real problem is. So that's generally what that's all about. Obviously, most of those questions on there are directed toward, to the sheriff for him to answer. And this is your first cut. You guys are gonna be the guinea pig for this questionnaire. So we will probably make improvements on it as we go. So any questions?
Don, I do have a question, maybe in the form of a statement. It was really frustrating to learn that our legislature reduced our per diem this past session. Can you update those in the room on what that reduction, the amount of that reduction, and why we had to reduce it?
Well, I don't remember the reduction. I think we're at, I think we're at twenty-seven fifty, if I remember right, no, twenty-five. We're down to twenty-two.
We were a little over twenty-three, I believe.
Yeah. I think there, we change that, seems like, every year. And what the maximum that we can, under law, is thirty-nine dollars. Well, I don't think thirty-nine dollars covers it. In fact, our cost at the state level, Department of Corrections, goes up every year. That's not unlike the county's cost, right? They're parallel. Your food costs go up, our food costs go up. So we end up with the situation where one number keeps going down and the other number keeps going up. Those two are never gonna cross. Well, with our budget challenges the way they are, the only way that we're gonna get those two numbers to line up better is if we reduce what's causing that cost to go up. So I think, I don't know yet because I don't have enough data, but I think that we can get a lot closer to that thirty-nine number if we can pull back on what's driving those costs. So if we, for instance, relocate these mental health people to another facility, in one central facility that the state pays for, that's gonna, that's gonna bring down costs to the county. The other thing that's driving a lot of those costs, and we gotta try to figure out a way to get to that number, is healthcare in general. I was told, I informed the sheriff over in Plaski County that they had one inmate that was costing them a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. I talked to another sheriff that says, "I would trade that one fifty for some of the ones I've got" because of that huge cost in healthcare. Well, there is something called an eleven fifteen waiver that we can get, that can, where we can put those inmates on Medicaid expansion. So right now, that's a ninety-ten split between the federal government and the state for patients who are on Medicaid expansion. Well, I'm not a big fan of Medicaid expansion. If it gives us the opportunity to reduce our total costs statewide, then I think that's an overall win and benefit. It's not the best solution, but it is at least a solution. Now, the steps involved in that is we have to apply to CMS, the Centers for Medicaid and Medicare, in order to get that waiver. And that process takes about two years. We have applied for that waiver, but as of yet have not heard back on it. So at least for that one thing, if we can get that one thing done, that would be, in the words of another sheriff in a small county, he said, "If that's all you've got done, that would be big for them." So trying to also get to some of that information with this questionnaire to try to figure out where we're spending the bulk of our funds.
So it's my understanding that our per diem was reduced to, I believe it's twenty-one fifty per day. So if you could look into that and see what the underlying reason why, because we worked so hard, the legislators did, Governor Parson did, to pay that rearage that the state was, that owed us, and we were about four hundred thousand plus at one time. So we're very thankful to get caught up. And we've seen a slight increase, but then it was disappointing to see it go the other direction. So, you know, I would still like to understand that better. Now's probably not the time, but since this is an issue that you're working very diligently on, some of those things that come up to reduce what we've worked hard for, I hope you can overcome and get us to where we should be. We charge forty-five dollars a day to house prisoners for other counties, and that's somewhat of a reciprocal rate. That's what they, most of them charge us if they house our prisoner. So that's what we believe is probably not even a break-even cost, but it's something that's, something we can live with a lot better than twenty-one and some change.
Yeah, we didn't help when we took a dollar thirty-eight of that, put it on sheriff's retirement.
That's what we did.
And I was against that, but it fell on deaf ears, unfortunately. Not that I'm not fully in favor of supporting the sheriff's retirement, but I insisted at the time that we gotta figure out a different place to get it because we can't be Robin Peter to pay Paul. And that's all we're doing with that. So trying to figure out how to make it sustainable is our problem. That thirty-nine dollars, by the way, I don't remember the exact year, but that goes back several years. And more than ten. And in ten years, the price of And in ten years, the price of milk has doubled. I don't know how much milk you serve at the jail, but that's just one category. And, and trust me, even, even homegrown eggs are pretty expensive. So if you consider the price of eggs, they, that, that one also nearly doubled in the last three years. So we're looking at a lot of pressures on our budgets. And not the least of which, at the state level, we've got the same similar problem. And I just, I'm doing everything I can to try to make sure that we're not gonna try to make up that budget shortfall on our counties who have the exact same problem. Because maybe some of the guys up there don't have constituents in their county, but I certainly do, and they all pay taxes in our county. So I think it's in our best interest all the way around. Let's face it, the justice system that we've got has a lot of moving parts, not the least of which is what we do with folks who are accused of crimes. And you can't start turning those folks loose on the street in a lot of cases, certainly these folks with mental health challenges. Any other questions?
All right, Don, seeing done, and I don't have any follow-up questions, but I would like to commend you for taking this up. It is something that we incur significant cost. Our healthcare to provide for inmates now exceeds two hundred thousand dollars a year. And we have had those isolated cases where one individual even required more. So that is a huge component to this. But I think more importantly, I would like to thank you for your service in the legislature and reaching out to counties because the interaction between the state government and county government is so critical. And oftentimes, we at the county level question our voice that we have with our state representatives and our state senators. So I commend you for being proactive and reaching out to counties on this matter or any others. So thank you for being here this morning.
Well, well, thank you all for taking a few minutes with me this morning. One request that I do have is we, we need you at the Capitol. We're all familiar with the way government works, it's squeaky wheel. And I need you guys to be squeaking, I really do. It's for a lot of these issues, certainly some of them, some of the property tax things that we've had before in the past, there's a bill that's making its way through, it was brought up but wasn't filed. I will make that available to anyone regarding personal property tax. Now, my best take on it right now is, is that it shifts personal property tax over to real estate tax generally. Now, not a huge fan of that. And so what would be really great is if we got input from our assessors and collectors and our commissioners on the effects of that down at the county level. So whenever that bill comes up, I'll do my best to try to make it available to you in between now and when it does get filed, so that you guys can start taking a look at it and can comment on it.
Don, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
At this point, I'm gonna take about a three-minute recess. And let everybody gather their thoughts, people come back and pick up any other general county business.